If we will all stand for the invocation, prayer laid by Mr. Edwards, followed by a hunch of allegiance.
Let's pray. Let's praise any father, we just again come to you tonight, thanking you for the many blessings you've given to us, thank you for watching over us. We ask father, you give us guidance tonight, we make a decision for the city and for the citizens of the city of Florence, just watch over us and just give us protection that we need, in Jesus' name, amen.
Our pledge to allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. White, if you could go ahead and roll please.
Councilmember Hendricks, here. Councilmember Griffin, here. Councilmember Eubanks, present. Councilmember Edwards, here. Councilmember Oliver, here. Council President Simmons, here. And present all six council members are in attendance, and therefore, a four of them is present.
Thank you very much. On the agenda, we do need to move item O to the regular agenda. I'm going to break on agenda B.
You got to vote for the brief agenda.
This is the motion to approve the agenda presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Hendricks, all in favor of motion.
Six zero, motion carries.
Now we have a message from the other.
Well, we have brief comments. First thing I'd like to say, I know earlier in the meeting, David Coop spoke about it's leaf season, so get your leaves to the street, I know they're gonna make a quick run through neighborhoods, and you can also check out the website, it'll give you some kind of idea of when they'll be in your neighborhood. Also, it's holiday season coming up, encourage everyone to be safe, it's there out and about, lots of activity, lots of activity about to start downtown, I know going up Court Street, we have a huge tree that's gonna be dedicated on Sunday evening, I'm certainly excited about that, and all the work with the lights that we've got downtown. I only have two other things, one, I'm gonna start with tomorrow, and I called to be sure this was okay, but tomorrow, Mr. Charles Anderson will turn 90 years old, so if you see Mr. Anderson, wish him a happy birthday. And the second, I understand our council president is having a birthday on the 21st, but are you 21?
Twenty-one.
Happy birthday to you.
And holding, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I have any reports for any department heads, now to apologize for my agenda. No department heads, any standing committees?
Yes, ma'am, I do have one, Public Works met on November the 8th, and we were called to order at 4:00 p.m., and in attendance was Councilman Oliver, Councilman Griffin, Councilman Hendricks, I was, you were, Ms. Simmons, and Chase McCluskey, and Bill Batson, and Mayor Betterson. I introduced the topic of some of the change orders that we had received at the previous council meeting about the Royal Avenue Roundabout, and one other, and the delay in receiving those invoices for the city. I then turned the meeting over to Bill Batson and Chase, and what we learned as a collective group is that the city will pay 80% of the total project, the city, the state of Alabama, rather, will pay 80% of a total project when we apply for and are granted certain opportunities for funding, the city then will pay 20% of that, and our obligation is for 20%, regardless of how long it takes to close out those bills. And the change orders that we approved in the work session today were reflective of a project that was six years old, but also then exceeded the price that we originally agreed because of some underground issues that we ran into during construction. And so, it was good for us all to get together and understand why the change order was so much, and then how we can manage those going forward, and quite frankly, we really can't. So, that's all. We adjourned at 4:23.
Thank you very much. Any other department, I'm sorry, send please.
Yes, ma'am, Public Safety met November the 9th, opened the meeting in 12:03, those present were Ms. Simpson.
Simmons.
Ms. I was close.
No, no.
Chief Anderton, Chief Holt, the mayor, Sean, and Michelle. Chief Anderton brought back to the committee the information about Firehouse Four, it was rebid because it was a clause that was left out when it was bid the first time, so that was sent back out for bid, the potential start date and breaking of the ground on that particular, Firehouse should be in March, it's probably a year-long project, and the vote was three, three zero, to carry on forward with that, and the meeting closed at 12:10.
Okay, thank you very much. The Finance Committee, we met to discuss the parking lot demolition, and the biz had come in, and present was myself, Mr. Jackie Hendricks, and Jimmy Oliver, and it was agreed on to pass to the full council of Tomlin, excavating and demolition for 774,126.85. That's how we found, any additional standing committee? All right, at this time, we'll call Ms. Bailey, we have three public hearings.
Thank you. Thank you, President Simmons, out of concerns for your voice, I would say that allow me to describe all of these combined, and then receive comments for all at one time, rather than opening, closing thirty separate ones. So, item nine A, and the companion, item 12A, is rezoning of property at Alabama Street and Marango Street for Main Street Communities. This comes to you all as a unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission, the current classification is R1 Single Family with a proposed new district of Planned Unit Development, or PUD. The application and recommendation do conform to the city's comprehensive plan, and the land use will be mixed use. Nine B and its companion, 12B, also unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission, rezoning from R1 Single Family to a proposed new district of R2 Single Family. The application and recommendation do conform to the city's comprehensive plan, and the land use is residential. And finally, item nine C and its companion, 12C, rezoning of property on Hermitage Drive, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends this rezoning as well, the current classification is R2 Single Family with a proposed new district of R3 Multi-Family, and the application and recommendation conform to the City of Florence Comprehensive Plan, and the land use is residential. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Okay, here in nine, I recommend that we open the floor for comments on the three items.
Okay, the floor is now open for comments, for or against, anyone to my left, I'm gonna speak for or against, in the middle?
Thank you, Ms. Simmons, don't feel bad, some people call me Mr. Simmons, so don't feel bad. Well, I'm speaking in favor because I've been living on Alabama Street for ages, worked at the old hospital, so seen a few tornadoes come through, and, but I think it's gonna be an addition to our community, seeing the good things that's gonna be put there, so we totally agree with that. The only concern we have, we just hope we have that good water back, you know, once it's finished, that our water concern will continue to be good, so we're in favor of that one, I don't know about the rest, y'all have to vote on that.
Mr. Simpson, just to clarify the question, he was speaking in regards to the Alabama Street and Marango?
Yes, sir, Marango, yes.
Okay, anyone else in the middle, or I guess either three public hearings, okay, to my right?
I recommend a closed public hearing, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we have business from the floor pertaining to the consent and the regular agenda, with a five-minute time limit, anyone to my left? To my left? No? In the middle? To my right?
Hello, my name is David Carson, live in Florence, just wanted to mention the parking deck issue, wasn't gonna say anything, but since there was literally nothing said about it, I thought I would go up here at this meeting, at the work session, I thought I would say a few words about that. I think it's good that it was moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, any item number with that much money should be, that should be done, but yeah, no one mentioned anything about the demolition of that parking deck, whether it should be demolished or not, you know, it's just $700,000, gotta be done. The way, the way that this all went down, I don't know, it should be forgotten, I feel like we're tearing down something that we don't have to tear down, we shouldn't have had to tear down, right now, there's city employees parking there, it's a functioning parking deck, you're just gonna tear it up and throw it away. But the price, after looking at the report that I received from the Building Department, it's close to the price it would took just to fix that thing back in 2018, so yeah, it seems like a huge waste of money. I can only think that the main reason everything went down like this with the new parking deck and tearing down this parking deck that people are parking at, you know, if it's dangerous, you wouldn't have city employees parking there, is that you really wanted that lot next door. I'm guessing that's for your Taj Mahal that you want to build for your city, new city hall, for you, for the taxpayers to pay for you, so that's why it seems like a waste of money. At the very end, at the end of the day, we still got one parking deck, millions of dollars to spend, that's already spent. This is something, I wish something would have been said, and at the meeting, I was at that meeting whenever you approved the demolition of the parking deck, that was like, literally like a 45-second long, maybe a minute-long meeting, like zero discussion, so I'm glad you guys really looked hard at this, you know, it's only $700,000, it doesn't really matter, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? If not, Mr. Whitey, if you can read the consent agenda, and there's a typo on V, it should be reappoint instead of appoint, if you'll read V.
All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the four city council for reading and studying, are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion of the council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request.
A motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
So moved.
There.
Motion by Mr. Griffin, second by Mr. Edwards, all in favor of the motion.
Six zero, motion carries.
I'm going to break.
Okay, item A, under the regular agenda, is an ordinance to approve rezoning 14.75 plus or minus acres located at the corner of Alabama Street and Marango Street, this property is to be rezoned from R1 Single Family Residential and RV Residential Business to PUD, Planned Unit Development, as requested by Main Street Communities LLC, sponsored by Melissa Bailey.
During her motion for immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Eubanks, all in favor of the motion.
Six zero.
During her motion for the adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Ms. Eubanks, any discussion? All in favor of the motion.
Six zero, motion carries. Item B is an ordinance to approve rezoning of 3.79 plus or minus acres located on Huntsville Road between Prairie Street and Fulton Street, the property is to be rezoned from R1 Single Family Residential Lot to R2 Single Family Small Lot, as requested by AP III LLC, sponsored by Melissa Bailey.
During her motion for immediate consideration.
So moved. There.
Motion by Mr. Griffin, second by Mr. Edwards, all in favor of the motion.
Six zero.
During her motion for the adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Eubanks, any discussion? All in favor of the motion.
Six zero, motion carries. Item C is ordinance to approve rezoning of 6.2 plus or minus acres located at 1018 Hermitage Drive, the property is to be rezoned from R2 Single Family Residential Small Lot to R3 Multi-Family Residential, as requested by the estate of James B. Stewart and Andrew J. Spry, sponsored by Melissa Bailey.
During her motion for immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Eubanks, all in favor of the motion.
Six zero.
During her motion for the adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Eubanks, second by Mr. Hendricks, any discussion? No, all in favor of the motion.
Six zero, motion carries. Item, item D is a resolution to create the Lauderdale County Public Utilities Advisory Board, sponsored by Mayor Betterson.
During her motion for immediate consideration.
Motion. There.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Mr. Edwards, all in favor of the motion.
Six zero.
During her motion for the adoption.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Griffin, any discussion?
I do, Ms. Simmons, this is one of those things that it's a result of maybe lack or own, lack of communication, miscommunication, no communication, and the goal with this is to put people around the table who can help facilitate that communication on behalf of their constituents in the county, so that they feel like they have a voice with our utilities board that affects them. So, the hope is that we are able to see this work, and it come to fruition, and facilitate better communication, and then better services for all of the individuals served by Florence's utilities.
I'd like to also add that, you know, for a couple of years now, I've heard from our friends in the county that they just felt like they weren't being listened to or heard, or their needs being addressed. Well, this is us, the city council, mayor, and all involved in the city saying, we hear what you're saying, and we want to fix it, and that's the step that I feel like we're taking tonight, is providing them a, an advisory board they can go to and be heard.
This particular board has representation by every city in the county, which has never happened before.
All in favor of the motion.
Six zero, motion carries. Item E, which was moved from the consent agenda, is a resolution to approve a contract with Tomlin Escavating Company Incorporated to provide labor, equipment, materials, and incidentals necessary for the demolition of the municipal parking deck located at 118 West Tom Bigby Street, and disposal of the debris for the City of Florence Mayor's Department, and disposal of the debris, and the total contract amount had to exceed $774,260.85, sponsored by Mayor Betterson.
During her motion for immediate consideration.
Vote, second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Oliver, all in favor of the motion.
Six zero.
During her motion for the adoption.
Vote, second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Oliver, any discussion?
Yes, let me, let me say, this, this study was done on this parking deck long before I came on the council, and if I had my way, we wouldn't be parking in it right now, because, you know, there have been pieces of concrete fall, and the study had revealed that a lot of water damage to the rebar inside of the concrete, and I think at one point, yes, Mr. Carson was right, I think for a million, million and a half, we could have probably gotten another 10 years out of it, but it has gone well beyond a parking deck that was built in that era, it has outlived its life, and I feel like we're taking a risk by continuing using the parking deck, but we were assured yesterday that there's no danger in the deck collapsing, but yes, there are some issues with, you know, cracking concrete and that type thing, is why we have decided to demo the deck to make way for whatever happens there in the future.
I have something to say. It's interesting, because we could take the same study and have a completely different take on it. I read it too, and I was very grateful to have it, because yes, it was from 2017, so I'd like to correct that for the record, but it was from 2017, so almost 10 years ago now, I think we had an opportunity then to have invested that money to get and extend the life of it, so that now, it would be a viable opportunity to have it as well as the other if needed, or not to put us in a position where we have to consider parking, and the, the ever-louing issue of how to pay for these things without borrowing more money. So, I disagree, and I think for that reason, because we don't know what we want to do with the city hall, because we don't have those answers, taking it down now as an opportunity for people to park there is a little bit out of order, we've taken things a little bit out of order, and so that's why, I mean, that will be reflective of my vote today, we didn't take care of the entity when we had it, and now here we are, and, and we're faced with a situation where we'll have to bring it down eventually, but maybe right now is not the right time.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Which, which one, you want to go first? Ms. Edwards?
I mean, we spent over a million dollars to give 10 more years of life in the program.
We did not.
We didn't, but that was the opposite at the time, so if we had done that, we got three more years left even, and then we got ten. I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm glad we, in a way, we didn't spend the over a million dollars just to give 10 more years of. I was just hoping, go try to go 10 years and then take it back, we got seven additional out of it, so this has served us, it's served us life, we didn't have to.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, ma'am. My thoughts are, if it's unsafe, why are we using it? And we were presented with the idea that it was unsafe and it should be torn down, and so we've been working towards that, but if it is unsafe, no one should be parking in it, period, ever again, but it's being used, and so, either it's unsafe or it's not, and I'm sorry that I didn't realize that when I was working on this earlier, that I just assumed it would be closed, because we wanted it taken down because it was unsafe, but it's been used every day since we decided it was unsafe, and yesterday, we found out it's not gonna fall, so it's apparently not as unsafe as the picture that I interpreted a year ago, so my vote will reflect it is or isn't unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hendricks?
Yes, I was kind of hoping, we would vote on this in the 1st of December, as y'all know, I requested to look into what we could do with this building prior to moving forward with building a new building, and if we were able to remodel and add on, which I know I've only got a couple of weeks to find that out, that if we were able to save, let's say $10 million, then maybe we still could invest a little money in that parking deck and get a, you know, some more life out of it, and have it as that municipal deck that we can no longer afford, so, but, and I'm weighing that against, if we're gonna bring it down, it needs to start January 6th, and if we didn't give it two more weeks, I think we could have still done that, because if we do tear it down, it needs to get finished before the spring season starts for retail, and so, that will be reflected in my vote, and, and those are the reasons why.
I think we also need to remember too, one other important thing here is that had this been addressed in 2017 for the million dollars or one and a half, it, you know, would, as, as Michelle said, would be into that, and as Blake said, would have about three years left on it, but right now, if you tried to rehab it, it probably is, way costs have gone up, you're probably looking for $4 million, $5 million, where it's gotten to, so that's another thing I think you got to remember about rehabbing.
And my comments are, if it's unsafe, I do agree, we should not be using it, and the upper two levels have already been closed off, they've been closed off for quite, I think, some years now, that we do not allow people to park on the upper levels, upper levels of the deck, and I will, my vote's gonna reflect that, that we hold off on the demolition, even if we have to close it, just close it down for the safety reasons, but don't do anything until we get a final decision on what we're gonna do with City Hall, whether we're gonna build a City Hall or not build a City Hall, where we're gonna put it, and then that all be done at the same time, but as far as the safety, safety is always first, and if it's that unsafe, after the Christmas holiday season, to let those businesses try to recover for all the time, the revenue that they did lose after that, instead of taking it down right then until we find a concrete decision of what we're gonna do, just close it off, it's the same difference as far as the parking, if you take it down, it's not gonna be parking, if you leave it up and close it, it's still not gonna be the parking, because we have the, the other parking deck. So that's it, with that being said, all in favor of the motion.
Two votes for, four opposed, motion, I'm sorry, motion fails.
Thank you. And at this time, we will board appointments, which is, we have one that can see on the tree commission, and we did have an application for Bridget Sims. No, application for Ms. Bridget Sims for the tree commission, and. So, everybody did whip up unanimously for Ms. Bridget Sims for the tree commission, and then we had vacancy, we had two applicants, applications for the CETA, and at this time, it was three-three, so we didn't get the majority, so we tabled that to the next meeting, they're gonna reach out to those two candidates to see where we go with that, either one of the candidates will decline and not go, or the council will have to make a decision of which one that we will move forward with. And on the library board, and I guess they won't be reported, but we will table that, we will table that with the library board until next council meeting. With that being said, next week, I don't know, sorry, business from the public, I made a time limit, starting, to my left, in the middle? In the middle?
Whoops, did not mean to bump the mic there, sorry. Okay, so first of all, again, I would like to thank everybody. Uh, for those of y'all that didn't see, uh, the council meeting two weeks ago, I would like to thank everybody for the unanimous vote, uh, for the beautification board. And, uh, it was explained to me at the last meeting that it would be on the consent agenda for tonight and by, um, Mr. Oliver, who I just happened to run into, uh, last week at River Town Coffee. I had a good conversation with the councilman Oliver. And so, um, I'm happy he was able to explain that process to me, uh, as well during that conversation. And again, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. And so, uh, it means a lot to me that I was approved tonight. And, um, uh, earlier, you know, Michelle, you went to, again, I have to say a special thanks to as well for being the person that nominated me. Um, Michelle, you might said, you know, it's important, you know, you know, for her, you know, for people to have a voice. And, um, that's what I'm hoping I'll be able to do. I'm the first, uh, member of the beautification board to have autism, and I hope to be able to be a voice, uh, for people with disabilities and especially people, uh, with autism. Because, you know, it's been hard, and I feel like that, uh, even a lot of people in the public, you know, they don't understand the struggles that autistic people like me go through. And it is hard for me sometimes to, you know, to even come in here and, you know, be in front of the mic to be able to speak to me. I had to have, uh, multiple years of therapy just to do what I do today. And so, um, you know, I would encourage people, you know, I get it's hard to come to these meetings, but my goal is to always be here. And, uh, if you, uh, have anything that you need that you think I can be of assistance to as a member of the beautification board, please reach out to me. And I know that Mayor Vedderton mentioned this as well, uh, in, you know, in his statement. But, uh, coming up this Sunday, on the twenty-fourth, at five P.M., is the Christmas tree lighting that the beautification board sponsors between, uh, Tuscaloosa and Irvine, uh, here downtown on the Report Street. And I would encourage everybody to come out to that. And so, uh, with that, thank y'all so much, and again, thank y'all for the unanimous vote. I appreciate all of y'all, and, uh, I hope that afterwards I can get a picture holding the paper where y'all all signed it approving me, and, uh, maybe y'all or even the beautification board might could share that on social media. I want to, and again, I hope that I serve y'all proudly, and I promise that I will not let any of y'all down. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, been recent, seventy-five West Alabama Street. As an ambassador of Christ, I have a mandate to tell the truth to power. Because of the greed in this nation, our political system has been corrupt. Our religious system is corrupt. Our criminal justice system is corrupt. Our socioeconomic system is corrupt. All because the love of money. We looking for some real Christians that's not working serving money for serving God. Making the decision to do what's right instead of doing what's popular. Two thousand twenty-five, you gonna have to be real? Or you gonna just be a part of those that failed God? A lot of y'all know, I, you probably don't know, but I was voted as ambassador with the Florence, Florence Police Department with two chiefs of police. Had a meeting with the new chief, Holt, to see if I was gonna continue to be the ambassador for the Florence Police Department. One thing I had to be, had to get him to understand is when I see a bad-acting police, I'm gonna intervene. Bad-acting citizens, I'm gonna intervene. When I see a police abusing someone, I'm gonna intervene. If you want me to continue to be ambassador for the Florence Police Department, you gonna have to understand that. I witnessed some bad-actives policemen that need training. And I'm gonna tell the truth, even if it kill me. Cause I serve God, I don't serve man. We need some more training in our police department. I don't know whether it's gonna take more money, but some of them still acting like it's slavery days. You gotta de-escalate when you come into the black community. You don't, you don't escalate nothing and pull your gun on people without knowing the situation. Don't care how much it costs, but I can't, I can't go along with some of this stuff that they doing. There's too many complaints against the Florence Police Department right now. Until we get a mayor that's gonna move this Confederate racist statue out in front of this courthouse, it's gonna all be, always be a redneck city. Racist city in front of the halls of justice because politics has took, taken over the criminal justice system in America. You gotta get back to God.
You have one minute.
We don't put people in position because we like them, it's a family member. You gotta be committed to doing what's right. If you were black, you would want that Confederate racist statue monument in front of the halls of justice where black folks have to go and try to get some justice. We've been intimidated and deceived too long. And I'm gonna tell the truth, even if it kills me. But if I die, I'm gonna die on the right side. For justice, equality for all. Some of these people that have a form of godless but denying the power religious bigots need to preach the right message. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
My name's Laura Greigsby, and, um, I live in Florence, and I work for the City of Florence in customer service. I actually came just to observe and listen. Um, usually when I have a microphone in front of me, I sing, so bear with me. Um, my concerns basically, um, about the parking deck is the employees are, like tonight, for instance, I stayed. If I have to walk two blocks by myself, there's no one that stayed with me, and I'm gonna walk two blocks by myself, okay? It's raining outside. We have to walk two blocks, two and a half blocks by ourselves at night. It's dark, five o'clock, it's dark. So I don't care to walk, I walk all the time. There's other people in our departments in this building that don't feel comfortable wa- walking by themselves that far, especially in the dark, in the weather, that's the concern. It's nice to have this parking deck open until you have to close it. Um, that's a concern for a lot of the people that work in this building. So that's one of the nice perks of having it open right now. If it has to close, that's fine, but that's a concern for a lot of people. We've been saying it for a long time. I've talked with Mr. Griffin about it several times, about the distance walking. I don't have a problem with it, it's not a problem for me. But at nighttime, bad weather, snow, pouring down rain, that's a, that's a pretty good haul. If you had to park down there too, you, you, it's a pretty good haul. The other concern that I have is please don't even think about trying to put a band-aid on this building. This is, this building is a mess. If you haven't been in it and walked around and looked in it, you need to. You need to come and look at it. There's mold, there's asbestos showing. When it rains heavy, the basement floor floods. You need to get a, you need to get a bird's eye view of it because it's a mess. And I hate to be the one that tells it, but it is. So you walk in there, it smells of mold, the carpet's nasty, it's not a clean, it's not a clean environment. So I just hope, and you do decide what you wanna do about the building, to please try not to put a band-aid on it. I don't wanna work in there if you try to, if you wanna remodel it. And I don't want that stuff flying around me inhaling it. You wanna come sit with me while I'm working and that stuff flying around? Come on. Do you, I'll gladly have you sit with me while I'm working and they're remodeling. Please don't do that. Please don't do that. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? All right.
Hello, my name is David Carson, I live in Florence, and I'm the ambassador of Feral Cats. That's what I am. Um, yeah, this is, um, it's me, surprised me. Like, I came in here, I was just like, I didn't feel like coming today. Like, during the work session, I was literally playing video games on my, my cellphone the whole time, barely listening, cause I just figured I knew what was gonna happen. And you guys surprised me, um, with this parking deck thing. It's, it's, it's good to see, it's good to see. Um, makes me feel like, uh, it's worthwhile sometimes to pay attention and to get involved. I'm not saying I had a big or small part in any of that, I just, I don't know, just felt like saying that. And, um, yeah, I would like to, this is twice in like twenty-four hours I've heard, um, workers in that, um, City Hall saying, come, come and, and, and look at the City Hall and find out for yourself. I would love to do that. Um, can I get a tour? I can bring my camera, we can check it out. I wanna see these horrible sweatshop, um, living conditions you got going on over there that, um, reason we gotta tear it down. Man, I've done it like industrial and factory work my entire life, man. I would, I, I wanna bring my video camera, I wanna see these horrible conditions that you poor people have to work in there. I could be wrong, but that's one thing I like, I love, you know why, you know why I like cameras? You know, it's not that I'm a pervert or creepy or anything like that, I, those cameras don't lie. That's why I film everything. It's really easy to lie when you're not being filmed and there's not a record of it. So I would like to take a camera and let the public see for themselves what the situation is in the City Hall. Invite me in, let me, um, um, take a video. You know, I can be escorted if anyone's uneasy around me or whatever, you know? Um, I'm not very scary, a little old me, if I was gonna do something crazy, I would've done it already. You know, I'm here to start a crowd, you know? And, um, get some answers and, and promote transparency. But yeah, let's check it out. Um, yeah, let's check it out, could be wrong, prove me wrong. You know, cameras don't lie, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have council members report, starting with Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, ma'am. Wendy the Pooh shared something recently that Piglet, even though he had a very small heart, it could hold rather a large amount of gratitude and thankfulness. Piglet's heart can hold a lot. And if you know Piglet, you would not expect that. What I would love is for our citizens, for more than just one or two times a year that we call Thanksgiving and Christmas, if we could enlarge our hearts with Thanksgiving and even forgiveness. I look forward to the Thanksgiving season, it has snuck up on me. If you look, you will find many opportunities to serve others in the next ten days. I challenge you to do that. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city, and if you need me, call two-five-six, three-three-five, six-five-seven-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shebix.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Um, a couple of things, congratulations, River. It was really an honor to be able to do that on your behalf. I've known you a long time, and I'm excited to hear about your service on the beautification board. Thank you. Um, I did want to say to Reverend Simpson that I hope that you are willing to share some of that passion that you directed at us to the Lauderdale County Commission and the state of Alabama, where they have the ability to affect the change that we do not. So perhaps this was your rehearsal for that opportunity because that is not something that we can do, but I thank you for expressing your opinion as always. Um, today I had the opportunity to visit with some very dear friends as part of the Pyreian Group, and, um, they wanted to hear some updates from the City of Florence, so I was able to share with that. And they were very grateful for, um, the gas, the water, the street, and the utility departments. It was nice to get some commentary back from residents. They understand the value that we have because a lot of communities don't pick up leaves. A lot of communities charge you a lot more than we do to remove your trash. Um, and they don't have the services that we do in Florence, and it was nice to hear them say that back to me. And then finally, and most importantly, um, I want to invite everyone, if you're watching this on Facebook, if you're hearing it, um, I am having a community meeting on Thursday from six to seven P.M. That's Thursday, Ms. Simmons' birthday, but also known as November twenty-first. Um, at, uh, it'll be at UNA's East Campus on Toon Avenue. The churches where I normally do it were booked, so, um, the East Campus was gracious in allowing me to use that facility on room three oh eight. We will be able to hear from a lot of different department heads here about leaf collection, um, about utility and the AMI meters that will be installed, as well as Chief Holt and Chief Anerton about some very significant district board updates. So I invite you all and encourage you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shebix, Mr. Edwards.
I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and just remember to be thankful for the things that we have. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, I enjoyed the, uh, Piglet story and tying it into Thanksgiving. I happen to be grilling a couple of pork loins, uh, for Thanksgiving this year, so, uh, it all is kinda tied together. I also want to wish everyone a, uh, a happy Thanksgiving. And, uh, I respect, by the way, my fellow council members' thoughts on parking deck. Um, as, uh, you know, it wasn't scheduled to be demolished anyway until after the holidays into January, but it does give a little more time to give some thought to it. But, uh, I would guard against waiting too long because prices continue to go up, and if we have to rebid this, uh, it may not happen for seven hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. So, uh, let's, uh, keep that in mind as well. So again, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrix.
I too wanna congratulate our, I think we have two appointees in the audience right now. So Bridget and River, congratulations on your appointments tonight. Uh, I wanna invite everybody out to the tree lighting, um, five P.M., Sunday the twenty-fourth, Report Street in District Two. And I'd like to close with, uh, wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, thanks and respect.
Thank you. My comments will be brief, wanna say happy birthday to Mr. Charles Anderson, he's celebrating it on tomorrow. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone, uh, enjoy your family, enjoy your friends, and just be a blessing to someone. Even if you carry someone, um, a, a meal, just be a loving family and share the greatness and the goodness of God with someone else. We'll invite you all out on December the eighth, from one to five, to my annual Holiday Community Christmas Luncheon. It's gonna be held at W.C. Handy Gym from one to five. It's going to be held at WC Handy Gym from 1:00 to 5:00. You do not have to be impoverished or in need to come and share, it's a fellowship. So I invite everyone to come out and partake because even though it's in West Florence, we are still one community and a family. So I just want everyone to come out and share. You'd be surprised at what a great time you have and just enjoying people and making them feel loved, wanted, and engaged. Bob, I hope I got you out in a decent time and you have safe travels. Again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and we'll see you soon. Thank you. And we're going to have the closing prayer by Mr. Griffin.
Let us pray. Father, I thank you for your son, Jesus. I thank you for the determination that he had. And even when he said, "Let this cup pass from me," he was willing to continue with that cup. Lord, teach us to love our neighbors as ourselves. Help us to share our hearts and our manifold with those in need. These things we pray in Jesus' name, amen.